Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Burlington Community School District meeting of Monday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda? So, thank you. Second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. Next is the BHS presentation. Welcome.
We're lucky to have several students with him. I'll turn it over to, for you.
I will keep it short and introduce them. So we have the Student Council here to present about how they're organized, some of their activities throughout the year, and I will let them all come up here and introduce themselves.
Yeah, please come to the table. You can grab a chair, it looks like we might be a couple short.
We'll pull those chairs up, yeah. Guys, come up on the side so we can see.
Yeah. Squeeze in there, here we go.
So they were working on this PowerPoint up to the last minute, making changes, so.
Alright.
We were, always.
Most current information.
That's right. So who are you all?
You want to start over here?
Yeah.
So, I'm Edward Viggle, I'm a junior, and I'm just a general council member.
Okay.
So I mean steward, this is my first year on executive board, I'm sergeant at arms for our student council.
My name is Sarah Clement, I am the secretary, this is my second year on exec board.
My name is Zachary Greaves, and it's my second year on exec board, and I'm the vice president. I'm Hannah Morehead, this is my third year on exec board, and I'm the president.
I'm Caden Zog, I'm a junior at BHS, this is my first year, and I'm in the general council.
Awesome.
So we'd, we would like to thank you all for having us tonight, and I'm just gonna go ahead and get started with the slideshow. So Burlington Student Council, we're the biggest club at the high school. We are presenting tonight on major events, impactful community service projects, and how our council has positively influenced school, school policies and student engagement. So our main goal is to show the leadership and dedication of our Greyhound student leaders. And the Burlington High School Student Council currently consists of a hundred current and future leaders. That was slimmed down just a bit, we started the year with, I believe, a hundred and fifteen members. So we're down to one hundred now, and we're getting ready for our second trimester events, and we'll talk a little bit about that now.
I ask the follow-up, so the members, how does it break down from grade levels? So how many are, not close, you know, just not exact numbers, but how many are freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors? Is it pretty consistent, like twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five?
I would say, yeah, probably twenty-five is pretty even.
Is it pretty even?
Yep.
Thanks.
Alright, so some of our events that are organized, we are in charge of everything to deal with homecoming. Anything homecoming, we're the ones in charge of it, any of the back-to-school events, the splashback, we do that before school starts, kind of just to get everyone back together, getting them ready for school, kind of get them, this is real, school is about to start again. We do all the assemblies, as well as all the spirit days. So these kind of all run into the categories of school spirit, and then just encourage student participation. That's one of our main goals, is to get a lot more participation, and we have been slowly making that bigger and better every year, as well as raise funds for school initiatives. Each event is marked by a strong attendance, as well as positive feedback, but from students and staff alike, demonstrating effective organization and leadership skills.
So some of our community service projects, we try to do a few every month, and every member is required to do at least two per trimester. So some of them are like the special kids rodeo, which we do at the beginning of the year. We took over the blood drive this year, and that was really successful. We're going caroling at nursing homes this weekend, and then just some other stuff, like we're doing an animal drive. We did that over Thanksgiving, and then we'll do a food drive in the spring. So these support the community and just get students and community more involved. And yeah, just making sure that our Greyhounds are giving back to the community. So for our Stuko leadership, Stuko is all about leadership. So within our council, there's elected positions that hold key leadership roles, including the president, vice president, sergeant-at-arms, secretary, and treasurer, communications, and honor council. Each of these members are responsible for specific duties, such as event planning, meeting coordination, and communication. The structure of our council promotes accountability, and ensures that all voices within the student body are represented and heard in the decision-making process. This just kind of helps make sure that everyone feels like they have a stay, because it's a council, and we all want to be a part of it. Yeah, that's kind of all.
Faculty-student collaboration. The council maintains a strong partnership with the admin team and student groups, facilitating open dialogue and joint initiatives. This collaboration ensures alignment with school goals and enhances the effectiveness of programs and events through regular meetings and shared projects. The council fosters a unified school community working towards common objectives. And I don't have a lot of, alright, I know school spirit, as well as student voice, have been meeting with the administration to work by getting decorations into the school, as well as getting mirrors, full-length mirrors in the girls locker, or girls bathrooms.
So our student council runs on a point basis, so for each meeting, a member will receive ten points. If the student is happened, they happen to miss a meeting, or they're sick, they can, it's something new we're doing this year, they can look back over our slideshow, so we've really been working hard to make sure that for each meeting, we do have a slideshow we can go over, and it's really nice, because now with the new library, we have, you know, a projector screen on each side, so we put those to good use every other Wednesday. So they can, what I've been doing is I hide a word in the slideshow, and they can go through the slideshow. Once they find that word, they can then email me the word, once they found it, and they will receive partial points for that. They also have to demonstrate an understanding of the events and what's in the slideshow itself. And then, once I know who's there, and the attendance sheet, the actual meeting has been filled out, I then take it to our, our Google Sheet that we have on our shared Google Drive between the exec board, and it's entered alphabetically, so everyone, you know, A through Z, last name, their emails are in there too, so if we ever need to email anyone, we can scroll down and copy and paste it, and email, and email the whole council at once. That's really nice for just getting communication out there, stuff like that. So it's a great way of keeping track of our attendance.
So these are some of the committees we've done throughout the year. So for each event, we have a committee, where one of the exec board kind of leads a committee, and then people within the council can join in. So we do all the homecoming events, the special kids rodeo, so like we were touching on earlier, it's a rodeo for kids with special needs, to help them feel like wanted and have friends. The blood drive, food drives, Angel Tree projects, that's just giving kids that want to have the opportunity to maybe get the Christmas gift they wanted, give them a Christmas gift. Beach night, that's like a little widdy dance we have after a basketball game. Coed volleyball, it's a big fundraiser we have, because it's pretty cheap to run, and we get a decent amount of teams in there. Vice versa assembly, the dance, vice versa. Post-prom, which is a lot of events for after-prom. Dragon boats, that's a big event, that's really our most expensive event, so that's why we have to fundraise a lot for it. It costs a couple thousand to do, but everyone loves it. Closet upkeep, Ian, this year had a, not remodeled the closet, but cleaned it out.
We got rid of the lobs.
Yeah, took a couple hours. School spirit, just making sure we have a lot of school spirit and pride. Fundraising, so we get some like blue grams, which are like Tootsie Pops, with like notes. Those are a big fundraiser. Student voice, making sure like if someone wants a chance at the school, then go to administration. Community outreach, and then school spirit, school spirit's in there twice.
It's important.
And then this year, we also, we took a trip up to Iowa State University, and we went to the Iowa State Leadership Conference. And then we have also on here the Iowa State Project, so did you want to touch on that?
Want me to touch, alright, alright. So for this year's IA Student Council project, they want to click carefully and connect confidently, which is just promoting safer usage and education for using online resources, especially your phones, as more and more younger students are getting into using the internet. And so their mission is to empower schools and students with the knowledge and tools necessary to navigate the digital world, their education awareness, proactive and proactive measures. And then some of the ideas that we've been tossing around, as well as IA Student, or IA Stuko, is posting digital footprint tips on social media to help our, the older students who are using social media, you know, understand some of the dangers. Displaying informational posters around the Burlington Community School District, not just at the high school, but also at the elementary schools, and the middle school, and the outer Leopold. And a meeting with younger students and teaching them digital safety, and then again, this is especially at the elementary level. And we'll have more on that in the upcoming months.
And that's our presentation, that's all we have for you guys.
Fantastic.
Do you have any questions?
I've got a few, but I'll let the board go first.
You said your meetings are every other Wednesday in the library, what time?
Seven thirty-five.
Thank you.
Can I ask how you, if I like to do your representatives?
It goes by the whole general council. So a Google form is sent out at the end of every year, and it's, it used to be voted on by the executive board, but last year it moved to the entire general council. So when the form is sent out, they, it's by first, if you want to run for executive board, you have to, you submit your interest to our advisors there in Paris, and then they'll, she'll send out the Google form, and if you are interested in running, you have to pick your top three. You can't run for president and vice president unless you've been on exec board for one year already. So like if you're a general council member coming in, you cannot run for president or vice president.
And if you're, how do you get to be a general council member?
I mean, I can answer that, so Mrs. Ferris, our advisor, sends out a form every single year. Actually, I think we, last year we did it like every trimester, right? They kind of, and like courage new members come in. There's a Google form you fill, and it asks you questions, like leadership style, how you behave in school, your weeks, your strengths. And the exec board reviews, like reviews that, and then they decide whether or not you would be a good fit. So if you get in, then you're a part of the general council, and then you can vote and start making changes within the school, and ultimately become a better leader.
Great. Does anybody want to just share how you've grown personally as a result of this experience? If you feel comfortable sharing?
Yeah.
Thanks, Aaron, it's good to hear your stories.
My brother was president, or vice president when he was a senior, so then I saw that when I was a freshman, and then just general council member, and then exec board, and just trying to work my way up. But yeah, just learning delegation, like, because with a hundred people and so many events, like you have to be able to work with a bunch of people, and let other people do their own thing. And yeah, that's probably what I've learned the most from it, but.
I'd say for me, I was not involved at all my freshman year, and I feel like that's kind of, I mean, none of my family was involved in school, it, it was just really, they went to school, and that was all they did. I've never been very involved in sports, so I really, you know, I feel like I, once I found student council in my clubs, it, it really helped me get involved. I've done a lot to step out of my comfort zone too, I'm not the most social person, but I've really tried to work on my public speaking skills. I've, you know, at homecoming, I spoke in front of the whole school, at the assemblies, it was really hard, but I'm, I'm always up for a challenge, and I love doing it, I love student council, it's my favorite club by far, so. I can share as well, so, kind of like Ian, I wasn't necessarily involved a whole lot. I did do sports my freshman year, and I was involved in a club called Leo Club, I ultimately didn't like it, so I ended up quitting. But then I joined Stuko my sophomore year, and I kind of realized that you can do well in school and be active in clubs. And then ever since then, I kind of have slowly, just gotten more involved, and now I'm involved with a lot, in taking SEC classes and things, it really just helped show that you can do more than just your normal high school curriculum.
Great, thanks for sharing, guys.
One question I had, if each one of you would just say, what has been your favorite volunteer activity that you've done? Does that have to be this year, it could have been a year ago, but what is, each one of you, what's been your most fun activity? Okay, we'll start with you.
Do you want it to be like community service?
Just anything you've participated in, like an activity you've done for student council? What is, what has been your, one of your favorite things you've volunteered for here?
Sorry, that's an activity.
Okay, well, so during football season, I was pretty busy, so I didn't, wasn't able to participate in all of the events, but the leadership conference was definitely my favorite, it was really fun. Came up to Ames and stayed the night there. Yeah, learning, learned a lot about leadership, because like me personally, I'm always trying to find a way to become a better leader through all my sports. And also like, back to Olivia's question, it's like, it's helped me kind of open the doors to make myself more spread out among the school, because I joined DECA, and also did the musical this past fall.
I was gonna say, football and musical, you haven't been busy at all.
Lots of free time in there.
Yeah, Stuko's really helped me become more versatile.
Alright, great.
Just favorite activity is probably post-prom. It's, it's nice having a whole bunch of people able to do that, and for free. Like, I don't know, that's pretty cool that we put that on for all the high schoolers. I'd have to go with caroling, which is something we started last year. That was, it was interesting, but it was still fun, it was a little challenging, but we all had fun, those of us who went. And then we're still doing that this year, which I hope will be a little bit bigger. And then, as Caden said, the leadership conference was definitely the most fun I've had at one of those leadership conferences, hands down.
How many places do you go caroling?
We'll go to teachers' houses, we've gone to, we've gone to three or four of the nursing homes. And I don't know if we'll go anywhere else. Oh, and Klein Center last year.
I'm, I'm caroling this weekend too, so I'm not gonna.
What day are you guys going?
We'll figure that out tomorrow.
Well, but Sunday we might run in, be.
I'd say my favorite event is probably special kids rodeo or the leadership conference. Special kids rodeo, it's overall just a great opportunity. You get to hang out with a special needs person all day, pretty much, you eat lunch with them, and then it's down at the rodeo park in Fort Madison. You kind of just, there's a whole bunch of rodeo-based activities, like there's horseback riding, there's like team roping, kind of, sort of, and then there's like a bull riding simulation thing. So it's kind of awesome, you just get to spend a day with them, you get to meet a lot of really nice, awesome individuals, and you get to know a lot of people, I know I've met a lot of people, and when I do go to the rodeo, they're like, you helped the special kids rodeo, and we get a lot of praise from it, because Burlington, within the past two or three years, we have been the biggest organization to bring in the most people for volunteers. And then, it's great. And then, like Zach said, leadership conference, probably been the most fun one I've been to. It was definitely an experience.
I would say for me, there's so many just awesome events we do, all of homecoming week is, I don't sleep that week, but it is my favorite week by far. There's just so many things, you know, I think every day I did something, every day that week, there was something to plan, there was something to go to. I think student council personally, I might be a bit biased here, but I think we have the best parade flow this year. We put a lot of work into it. And another one I'd say is Grimes Fun Fest. I think it's just awesome how many high school clubs are involved in it, and how many of our high schoolers do participate in it, and it's just gotten bigger every year, I think last year, you know, there weren't as many clubs or as much participation there, but this year it just, it completely grew, I think, personally, so it was great to see the participation that we had there. For me, I would say it's one of our community outreach events, which is community leaf raking. So the way that works is, there's like people in the community that are like, hey, could you guys leaf rake this house? And we're just helping out, because they aren't necessarily able to. I remember my freshman year, I did it to help out with Leo's Club, but student council has taken over the event. And I did it last year, and we helped out with a teacher, Tracy Thompson, who had a bad medical accident, he wasn't able to take care of stuff on his property. So it was kind of nice that we were able to help support a fellow teacher of ours, and just help get all the leaves cleaned up. And then I also once helped this old lady, and she was very grateful, and she baked us cookies after we were done. And it was fun, because you get like the underclassmen more involved, and they're driving around the community with the upperclassmen, so you're helping like ease ties between the grade levels, and it just helps like coming together and building like a bond, and like friendship. And it's a good thing to do for the community, and normally go back to the school, sometimes we have pizza or something afterwards. Just a good thing to do. And then the leadership conference, learned a lot, and it was a great time. I have to say, it was amazing meeting with a bunch of different people from Stuko's across Iowa, kind of learning from where we can improve, what we're doing really good at, and it was a really good collaborating just session. And it's definitely something that I would like to go back to again, but yeah.
I have a little something to say. So I want to say I appreciate all of you guys at such a young age doing that, because I remember me at my age, even thinking about that. Ian, talking about how you got a public speaking, I'm the same way, I'm, I'm a board member, but public speaking is not my thing. I'm not real comfortable with it, but I'm very proud of you guys for what you're doing. Everything that you're doing right now is going to help you along the way. I'm also, we're for the city of Burlington, and we are doing like a strategic planning thing, which, so I'm probably going to come to one of your, your meetings soon, because we're trying to collaborate of how we can work as a community, which is what you guys are doing through school, that we can work as a city, and we can work as a school, and where we can, there's some things that are separate, but there's ways that we can work together. So it was really exciting to hear you guys tonight, and all the activities that you're involved in, and just making school better for everyone, so I want to say thank you to you all, and I look forward to maybe working with you guys in the future.
Thank you.
So we have, we're lucky to have a good sponsor in the sponsors group, and they get to go on a few reward trips too, a little exciting, sometimes some golf, not golf, or something like that, and some different things, but I know they enjoy going on those trips, but that's a bonding time for them too.
Absolutely.
Relationships and things like that, so we just, I love how much hours that our kids give in the community, whatever, it's just amazing.
Makes it even different.
So, the Iowa State thing probably wasn't one hosted at Iowa, Mr. Martin, or you just automatically had them go to Iowa State?
Yeah, there's a little preference.
There's a little.
I like to refer to it as the Iowa State.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you guys being here, and thank you for presenting and informing the board about what's going on.
And thank you for your hard work, it's not easy to be a student council member, so thank you.
Alright, I want to do a little foot off. With the board?
Yeah.
You guys want to all cram up into this area?
Okay. I was gonna say, otherwise you can stand behind them. Cram everyone right here, alright.
Where are we going?
Okay, you guys will go in front of us, yep, so you're gonna scrunch down, because you have, you have younger knees than all of us.
Yes, Olivia.
I was gonna say, Olivia. Olivia and, uh.
Yeah, I can do that.
Let's, yeah, let's put Aaron back here.
Aaron, you can come back there. Okay.
Here we go.
Oh, yeah, good change.
You're good, you're good.
Alright, we're all smiling, we're just, we're smiling away, lots of smiles.
Any parents?
Thanks, guys. Good to see you. Thanks for coming. Yes, one, thank you. Sure. Oh my goodness, yeah. Lots going on with student council. Yes. Amazing to hear. Um, and all of their events, uh, for the new board members, they self-pen. So post-prom events, prom, student coun, or homecoming, the dance, that kind of thing. All of that of the approved and funding comes out of the student council funds. The, the district doesn't pay for any of that. So for them to be able to fundraise and have all of those events, yes, is quite amazing. Public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Student representative report. Welcome.
Wait for Zach, okay. We can wait, we can wait.
I kind of have a list, all the sports, because it's kind of busy.
Okay, yeah, you can start and we can get Zach in there when he comes back in.
He has all the boring club stuff anyways, so.
So sports.
Yeah, we're going all the way back to, what was it, two weeks ago?
Alright.
So Monday, twenty-fourth, um, no, nevermind, twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth Tuesday. Um, so the boys and girls had their first bowling meet, Fun City. Uh, the boys lost sadly, the girls won, because they didn't have a team. It's not like.
That's not basketball.
Is that basketball? Okay, it just, it's not labeled in, in bound. Um, Burlington girls lost to CCA. Fort Madison girls invitational, Burlington plays second, girls play second. Yeah, Burlington swim meet, Burlington plays second, December second. And then girls lost to Williamsburg on the second of well. That's basketball. That's swim. Okay, Burlington won against United Township, December fourth.
That was awesome.
And then Burlington girls won their last bowling meet, uh, December fifth, against Fairfield, but the boys lost sadly by like twenty pins. And then, girls varsity and boys varsity won against Mount Pleasant. And the freshman boys team lost and the girls JV team lost. Burlington plays sixth at the Cougar Invite on Saturday.
That was a swim meet, by the way.
And then, boys lost to Muscatine, varsity and freshman team lost to Muscatine, um, Saturday as well. And this week, um, is Muscatine, basketball against Muscatine? Today, right now?
I think right now.
Right now? Um, there is a wrestling quad with Burlington, Fort Madison, Waplo and Lone Tree, uh, December ninth. Basketball is.
Is it boys or is it all teams? I think it's, I think it's all teams.
All teams are going up to Iowa City West. Um, and the girls have their bowling meet against Kyokuk, going to Kyokuk. And then there's, uh, girls wrestling, me, duel.
Fort Madison.
Against Fort Madison. And then there's varsity basketball against Kyokuk and Win Ucheer against Kyokuk. Um, on Friday. And then there's a wrestling invitational against Kyokuk on Saturday. And then, uh, basketball teams are playing Center Point Urbana and there's a swim, uh.
Meet in Marshalltown.
Meet in Marshalltown.
This Saturday.
That's all I got for this one. Next week, I think, go this week. Should I go next week?
Might, might as well just do next week. There's a lot of sports going on.
Uh, we can go to the fifth. Uh, where was that? And then, PHS one or JazzCon.
The Jazz concert next Monday?
Supposedly, there's a Jazz.
I played in that. That's why we need to go and practice that.
And then both bowling teams are going up against West Burlington Tuesday, December sixteenth. There is a.
Galesburg.
Yeah, and then there's a Burlington versus Galesburg on the sixteenth.
Sorry, we're reading this off of that. We were a little, a little busy this past week.
Yeah.
Practicing for jazz band, right?
Yes.
Burlington versus Fairfield, I believe wrestling meet. The boys and girls.
The boys and girls.
Boys and girls against Fairfield, um, December eighteenth. And then, I like when they actually put all the teams on there. Um, and then on the nineteenth, there's a, um, bowling meet with Burlington, Central Lee, Mount Pleasant and Washington. Another wrestling invitational on the nineteenth. And then Fort Madison versus Burlington on the nineteenth for basketball. That's all I got. I don't want to go further.
Thanks for the sports update.
We have another meeting.
Alright, for clubs, for the next two weeks, we have Skills USA is preparing their welding team for the competition in spring. TSA is starting to sell their Christmas ornaments as a fundraiser. NHS and Leo Club are both doing Angel Tree, as well as student council is doing Angel Tree for seniors. Um, DECA is helping. Senior citizens. Um, and then, DECA is helping with Toys for Tots down at the Autotour on this Friday. And, um, that's all I have for clubs, for the rest of the year.
I have some more clubs though, and so, so Minority Folters is having a food drive that ends next week. And then next week is the Activity Hour Christmas Party and the Club Hour Christmas Party. And then Monday is the Jazz Concert. It's the Jazz, Jazz, it's the Jazzman Chamber Orchestra and then our two jazz choirs.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Wednesday, the Jazz Band is playing for the Rotary Lunch at the Golf Club. And Thursday is the big holiday concert with everybody.
Thursday, the eleventh or Thursday, the eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth?
The eighteenth. And, and it's, it's a, in the, uh, our gym at, at the high school, right? Yep. The fifteenth is at Edstone and the eighteenth is at the high school. It's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, that was. Yes. Thank you. Any questions for our student representatives? Sounds like a few busy weeks before winter break, huh?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for that. Consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-six cents. Unpaid bills in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents. And gifts in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? Motion passes. Items for discussion, J and M displays agreement.
So the fireworks, uh, that we use at graduation, and, um, I don't see it on mine, I want to make sure. That strictly comes out of the student council funds. Is that listed on our student, does it say that?
It says activities.
Okay, yeah, but that comes out, it's not a general fund expense, so that's all money that's been raised by them, um, to be able to use on that night.
Okay. I move that we, um, approve the, uh, J and M agreement, displays agreement. I second that. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? Motion passes. Next up is Board Policy one oh four R one and E one, two oh eight point O and two oh eight point R one. Five oh two point oh seven, five oh seven point oh two, five oh seven point oh five, six oh seven point oh two, seven oh eight. Eight oh two point two, eight oh four point five, second reading.
So again, Lacey, we reviewed these. I know you weren't at that meeting, but we reviewed them with the board and if the board had any questions regarding that, before we go to our approval of the second reading, so to the board members.
Yeah, this was taken to committee and, um, just a small batch that was reviewed and need to be updated. And so, um, the recommended action would be to approve the second reading as presented.
So I just have one thing. Um, so when, when they register, parents register kids for school, they, that is on the, the application form or whatever that they fill out and it shows the medication, they fill that out. So I've noticed that they still sometimes like, they still send something home sometimes. So does that get through or do they, do they need to do it two times? Um, I'm a little confused with that. I see that happens sometimes. I mean, there's still a form that the nurse sends home sometimes.
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to ask the nurse to see where the disconnect is or if there's, sometimes there might be a, a small thing missing, like some information missing if they didn't get the film form, or the form filled out in its entirety. So I, I can follow up with the nurses to ask them if there's a double, why there's also something to be sent home. But in, in my experience, I would guess that they don't have all of the information that they need and they might just have partial information.
Okay, so I got one sent home, because I gave permission for ibuprofen, but not Tylenol. So the school nurse could not give him ibuprofen, because I gave my kid ibuprofen before he went to school. But he could have Tylenol and she couldn't administer it, because I didn't write Tylenol down. So a second form came home for me to put that.
Clarifying info or something that they need before they can move forward, so. But I will check with them, Tammy, now.
Thanks for doing that, Lacey. Well, I move that we approve the policies as presented for second reading.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the second reading say aye? Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you. The Des Moines County Conference Board Representative.
Yeah, so each year, um, as part of being part of the Des Moines County Conference Board, the school district is to appoint a board member to act as a representative, to assist the Des Moines County Conference in setting the best Sessors budget for the next fiscal year. It's not a real time.
I did it last year and I attended two rather brief meetings. It was not overly complicated. Don't mind doing it again this year, but if someone else has a burning desire to get involved, I won't stand in your way.
I'm gonna nominate Will Vance. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Do, do you, obviously you accept. Okay.
I did it the year before and attended one meeting, so, I mean, it's, it's not a busy one, but it is, it is another board, so.
Alright, all those in favor of Will being our Des Moines County Conference Board Representative, say aye? Aye. Any oppose? Any abstain? Motion passes. Congratulations, Will, and thank you for being the representative. Usually when you start out with, I'm willing to, it's just an automatic. Mr. Robert Scott, we have superintendent report.
Uh, before I get on a couple of the items, I want to say to board members, uh, some of the new board members, even the existing board members, if you're having, uh, issues with your badges, uh, when you go to the school, if you would just use your phone and take a picture of the actual one that's not working. And that way it would help me, you know, you can send that to me then, and then I can work with the, sometimes they timeout. So if you haven't been to school, we're trying to override that right now, but they sometimes timeout after thirty or forty-five days if you haven't used one of them. Um, for some reason, that's happened at some schools and it's not happening at other schools. And so we're trying to figure that out right now, but if you ever get to one that's not working, because you should be able to get into the, I'll use Stone as an example, you should be able to get in from the outside rain to get into the lobby and then you should be able to get into the office. Those are the two doors that should be unlocked for you. I know we sent an email out about a couple doors for concerts or the high school or Stone, maybe a little bit later. But when you go to the main schools, you should be able to get into the main office. So if it's not working right, just make sure you're sending that directly to me and then maybe just take a picture of which one it was. Most of them have like a number on the top that says what it are, and that's easy for Michaela to reprogram those for you. Uh, it's, stay with technology. Uh, as everybody know, we had some technology, uh, go down because of an accident in the, uh, on Division Street. And so we lost a bunch of our tech. Um, the best way I can say it, it would be like a, for old people, would be a surge that came into your house and then it would have bothered your computer or your TV or you would have lost something. So that's what happened. Surge came through from this and then affected some of our servers and, uh, working with our technology people, working with the AEA, which we have a contract with, which is, this is really paid out for us here, be able to call them. And so all of those people, we were able to get things fixed. Now, most people would think three or four days is like not really fast. It is fast when we're talking about the level of work that had to be done. So appreciate our techs and then appreciate the partnership with the AEA. We actually meet with them on this coming Friday to what action steps we need to take in the future with some additional measures. Um, and, uh, so there could be some things that we need to purchase, uh, from the servers or, or, um, software support from certain companies or whatever that we need to have on file that had expired. But really, I mean, we got back everything. I say that because to my left is Greg and Greg has a lot of his files that are inside of what we had. And so there was a few days where he was sweating. Not as hot as it is in here today, but he was sweating, right? And, uh, we, we got everything back, right? We got everything back, so he was in a good mood, which put me in a good mood. Um, but I'm excited, I, I really appreciate the partnership with the AEA and I think our techs are, I'm just here, I actually got an email from a staff member that just said, you know, we really appreciate the techs, how friendly they are when they come out in the buildings and how they're helping us and supporting us. And so, um, most of the time, you know, it's, uh, the techs are like, well, what, they're not doing something right or something like that, right? Because we want our computers to work flawlessly, we want wifi to work flawlessly, right? And that's not the case anywhere, right? So we really appreciate how they're helping us out. Um, I did get to public officials, Greater Burlington Partnership hosted one down at the Art Center. Got to go down there and, uh, spend a little bit of time, uh, with everybody who is volunteering their time, uh, throughout the city or with the schools. It's nice to see other districts there too, get to communicate with them a little bit. Been at some sporting events, girls basketball and boys basketball both have some tough schedules, started off some really high ranked teams in the state. Top ten 3A, top ten and 4A, uh, schools or whatever, but I think that will pay off for them down the road. We have, we have a lot of kids, uh, and the boys team is a strong team too, so I think you'll see that in conference play as you did at the conference game on Friday. Tended the AEA Superintendent Monthly Meeting in Fairfield. Uh, we had legislators in also talking about what some of the priorities are going to be uh, for the future and I got to talk with them and they're reminding for us to just continue to advocate what we think is important for Southeast Iowa and for Burlington. Um, so we're, we're starting on that. Um, again, I'm lucky enough to be able to do the radio show, show with KBR and, um, you know, getting, getting to be able to talk about the great things that happen with Burlington. Um, I did that just before Thanksgiving. Had a Thanksgiving, great Thanksgiving break and then, um, I would say that we're excited. The Aldo meetings have been scheduled. They start here in January for that construction project, so it's just, when you, when I saw the calendar invites come up, I'm like, oh, that's right, that's happening, right? That's fantastic, right? So that's a piece of great news, so. And, uh, And, uh, that's all I've got for today.
Thank you. Any questions about the superintendent report?
I have a quick question. Are the phones still down when we're out with the electricity or with the, uh, with the internet and stuff? It used to be that way.
Yep, so they're all connected. And so that was one of the first things we got back, was the phones were the first thing we got back. We actually are, we met with the tech department and we are, um, coming up with alternative plans, um, to be able to use our Chromebooks or hotspot, you know, like I have my phone, but we actually have hotspots. And to make sure we have those at the school, so phone calls could still come coming in through our web app. It's called WebX for us. And so we'd be able to communicate. And we've, we've got a plan moving forward. We think that that'll be, we've ordered the materials and we hope that they'll be, yeah, in in January so we can have that. I think it's been a, it was a, a small weakness that we've had and I think we got a really good plan on how to make sure that we can, because parents want to be able to call.
That's important.
Right? And just be able to get communication, "Yep, we're on this, everybody's fine," kind of thing.
Good.
Yep.
You mentioned the conference and talking with legislators. Do we still have our legislators that come and talk to the board once a year? Or like our state senate and representative?
They have not come to a local meeting and they have had their meetings with the Greater Burlington Partnership. They hosted those on that. More than one, we could, could be something we talk about, but for the most part, we've, uh, we've been notified at the Greater Burlington Partnership. They host them in the mornings and I've attended a couple of those and that's, that's usually the time where we get them to talk about stuff. They, they are a good resource. I would say Matt Rinker and Taylor Collins. I will say both of them, when I call them, they, they call me back right away or they pick up the call and I talk to them. We actually have a meeting scheduled with Matt, um, next weekend. Usually Taylor calls me before he goes up the session. So those are the two that probably communicate the most with me.
Wondered as we address funding concerns that we always seem to have and sometimes...
And we had done that in the past.
We, we've done in the past and, yeah. Tried to convey the importance of that to them.
Tried to have them once and schedules didn't work out, so they weren't able to come.
I think I, I communicated with both Taylor and Matt, the dropout prevention, or dropout dollars that we don't receive full funding on because of a number of reasons from years ago. Uh, but, you know, that's really important to us, right? Because those, those dollars will really be key positions to help our Iowa students. And so we continue to fight the fight. It got a little bit farther last year in the legislative process, uh, and I'm hoping that it can get across that hurdle, even if it's a, um, a tiered level where it's going to work and it's going to take five years to get to the full funding of what we... But some districts are receiving full funding and we are receiving probably sixty percent. And it just kind of, they did a freeze on where everybody was at and they just kept, kept that. So we're fighting hard for that one. That's a big issue for me because I just, I know those are at-risk positions, whether it's academic at-risk or social emotional or intervention, you know, any number of positions that would help us.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your report. Uh, we have no committee reports, board communications. Director Hattabert.
I would just like to, um, thank the community for our contributions. We have a yearly total of forty-one thousand, uh, four hundred and seventy-three dollars that have come in from the community as donations to help our, our kids. And so I just want to say a big thank you for that and then, and to commend, commend the community for being so supportive. Also, I've seen a couple of very nice news segments on Channel Six about the Great Hop Performance Arts Center and so kudos to all of you who have been involved. That's it.
Thank you. Director Sneller.
Yeah.
Okay. Director Anderson.
I just want to thank the student council tonight, um, the other groups that we have from the different schools that come and every so often and update us and I, um, I just really appreciate that. Mr. Martin, you're here tonight, so I'm going to say this. I really appreciate your dedication. I see you at so many activities. You support all of your kids and I said during Washington night, you look like a proud dad of listening to them. I want to, I just say, I want to say how much I appreciate all the principals because I see that when they bring their kids in from every school. That means a lot, that.
Corey, did you get a picture of him when you were getting counsel? Super happy to be here and that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, I think they're that much. So that's why it just makes me so happy when I see you guys come in because I see you being that person down the road. And we need that in the world. We need the people, the kids that, because it's not easy stepping up and, uh, sometimes you feel like you're alone a little bit. So you guys have this group here to lean on. And so I just want to say I really enjoyed tonight and enjoy all the groups coming in.
Thank you. Director Roberts.
Um, thank you to student council for your presentation. It was very well put together and, and we appreciate all your hard work. I wanted to, um, thank our elementary music teachers. I had the joy of stopping by Grimes Friday. Nothing reminds you of why you want to serve on Burlington School Board better than going to a kindergarten first grade concert and seeing those kids as they walk in and then spot that person who they're looking for in the audience with their face lit up and just waving. So the energy was great, great teachers there. And I look forward to catching a few more of the holiday concerts. Um, thank you to all of our, um, teachers for working with our students so well.
Thank you. Director Baker.
Yeah, I think most of it's been said, but I would also thank the student council. It was a very impressive presentation. I love the presentation itself, but probably more than that, I just loved hearing your personal stories and the ways that you've grown um, through your experiences with student council. So I would encourage you guys to keep that up. I love that you have a student voice committee and, um, some have reached out wanting to have a voice with this, with this board of directors too. So I would also encourage you to continue those communications. It doesn't just have to be when you come in to do a formal presentation, but anytime there's anything on your mind, um, about school, uh, we'd love, I would love to hear that. I think we would all love to hear that, um, because you guys are there every single day and you're experiencing school in a way that we can't. So, uh, communicate with us and thanks to Mr. Martin for being here and really all of our building level principals, um, I think are, um, just doing a really good job of, um, caring for our kids and working with them to the best of their abilities and really thankful for our building level leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
It's good to hear the student council come in. I am pretty excited to hear that one of your goals is involvement and getting the rest of the student body involved. Like you were talking about, once you find a way to become involved, that just opens some doors and really enhances the education experience. So please, keep pushing involvement with everyone as a goal. That's wonderful. Got to see a little bit of that as well at, uh, Sunnyside last week. We paid a visit there, Annika and I did on Friday. Got to participate in High Five Friday with the student leadership team. It's wonderful to see student leadership trying to reach out to their peers and get them excited to be in school. That kind of spirit's hard to come by and it's good to see. We also got to see a little bit of it. We spent some time in a fourth grade classroom, uh, talking about the excitement of being on school board, how school board meetings work and what the school board does. And after hearing me and Annika talk very thrillingly for about twenty minutes, she asked, "How many of you are ready to be on the school board?" And about ten hands went up immediately before she was done saying. They wanted to start making decisions and helping out right away. About thirty other hands kind of wandered up eventually, but there were ten right away, like, "Yep, I'll go tomorrow, let's do this." Which, for a fourth grader to be that serious about it is something to see, so.
They did ask how much they get paid to be on school board. And we told them it was a whole lot of nothing because we are one hundred percent volunteer. And they were still confident that they wanted to serve. So, we got some future leaders there at Sunnyside.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, very exciting. I also spent Thursday at Course. They had their jingle jangle, so I was there all day. Much like our elementary buildings, the little preschoolers in our childcare going up to do their singing was absolutely adorable. They were so excited to see their family or their friends in the crowd. It is mass chaos to get them organized to walk down the hall, to do their performance, to get back to the classroom, to get checked out, and the staff has done an amazing job. I've seen it at, um, the other schools. I'm going to attend Blackhawks on Friday. So, kudos to the teachers for the amount of work, um, that they put into that. I know the preschoolers have been practicing since October. Some of our vibe teachers said they were very excited when, um, they took the day off because they didn't have to hear jingle bells again all day long. But it, it's very exciting. So I encourage you to attend those events and support our students in their, uh, in their environment. It's important for them to see us all there.
Band and orchestra and, um, choir this week too for Aldo.
Okay.
Well, there's something, yeah, there's, um, orchestra concert tonight, I think.
Yeah. Yep.
And then there's something, the Tuesday, or Aldo's. Tuesday, band and Thursday vocal, maybe?
Yep. The next two weeks. It's, it's crunch time before the, the winter break. So there is a sporting event and a musical event going on somewhere. And then during the day, of course, are our elementaries.
Yeah, Friday, we have some more elementary.
So a shout out to our maintenance department too and the custodial staff. They are literally tearing everything down to get it put on a truck, to get shipped across town for the afternoon concerts. So, thank you for everybody's hard work to make that possible because it really allows our students to shine in a different way. That is all I have. We are going to go into closed session. So before we go into closed session, we will take about a five-minute recess, make sure that we're offline.